Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've never listed contingent, but if you're in this, I don't know what you're saying, you and I got together.
You never know.
Right.
Sorry, I'll thank you.
I guess we'll be doing.
Turn your microphone on.
Oh, turn your, yeah, turn your mic on. All right, we call the meeting to order. I have an invitation with Michael Worthington. He's a pastor of Long Opelistic Church. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Mighty God, we thank you so much for your wonderful grace and for your mercy. We thank you for this town. We thank you for the people. We thank you for your grace that has kept us and your mercy that protects us. God, we ask that you would give us wisdom in our minds to lead these people. We ask that you would give us compassion in our hearts to have a heart for the city. And just as you have commanded of us to have, we pray for our leadership, that we would have quiet and peaceful lives. We ask that your anointing would be upon this meeting, and whatever is to happen, that it would be for our good. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor.
Here.
Ginger Stewart.
Here.
Wendell Walker.
Here.
Stephen Holt.
Here.
Stan Moran. Sean Simpson.
Here.
Wendell Moore.
Here.
Raymond Hatton.
Here.
Jim Ed Routsom. And Koi Butler. Hey, Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Oh, wow. Everyone had a chance to look over the last month's meeting minutes. Motion from Sean to approve last month's meeting.
Aye.
Senator Stephen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now my state of the city. Okay. Twenty twenty-three was a rough year. Luckily, we made it through pretty good. I was just gonna read, as far as rock, we used eight hundred tons of rock, cleaned thirteen thousand two hundred feet of ditches, twelve hundred feet of cove, sewer pipe, three hundred and fifty, most of our water lines wasn't a significant amount, it was just a lot of repair stuff on our water. We're still we're still having run into a lot of problems finding houses that weren't hooked up to the sewers. Just one problem, it seemed like every week we find more. And what's the problem now? It's either on us or the individuals. Because after a year, the contractors, they're not gonna come back. We were fine up till just a few months ago, but with us still finding problems, that's been where you know, a lot of people ask me why we hadn't posted, why we hadn't shown what we done last year. It was fixing mistakes and fixing, you know, problem. We probably patched, we probably had two hundred repairs on new stuff that we paid twenty-one million dollars to put in the ground, and nobody watched out for us at all. And I mean, that's sad, but it's, that's what we're living with. We're, we're getting there slowly but surely, so anybody that has problems, be sure and call and let us come and look. We'll do the best we can. Also, last year, while we're still you know, and I get questions about the park, we're still paying off a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar concession stand that don't help, I mean, sounds a lot to spend on a concession stand, but that's just something else we're having to live with.
Yep.
Wish, hopefully, we'll get it paid off this year. Aren't we set to pay that off this year?
Paid off.
Paid off.
Did it just the other day, I forgot today.
Oh, okay, well, good. We finally got it, so hopefully, we'll be working on our parks and stuff more now. We ended up, they're getting started on the new overpass. They estimated when we wanted that sidewalk over that, we estimated, or they did, I think, nine hundred and something thousand dollars, and we got three grants. And we weren't supposed to have to come up with two hundred and forty something thousand dollars. Yet, when the bids come in, we have five hundred and fifty something thousand. We had to come up with over three hundred and ten thousand extra that we wouldn't prepare to come up with. But we were able to do that because they wouldn't get started till we paid our share, so. But at least they're getting it going out there now. They've been working a lot of hours out there getting it done. I don't wanna harp on this, I'm not you can blame or do whatever you want, but as far as the information, I feel like we need to know. You know, like the solar panels out there. Now, this wasn't all solar panels, but we ended up, interestingly enough, our, our final tally, we owed two point seven million. We've paid three or four payments now. Did we pay one in February? So we paid three payments. We just got them hooked up last February, so we've had them hooked up a year last month. We paid a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. They produced seventy-eight thousand sixty-two dollars. And I know that's not all solar panels, but it's kinda like building a house. I mean, all the extras on there, most of that was for the solar panels and getting ready, getting ready to build them. And we've got seventeen more years of that. We didn't have any problems this last year. That's just what they produced and what we paid. And then we had a, we started a maintenance contract. So all in all, we're gonna lose at least sixty something thousand dollars this last year. So, and that's the best it's gonna be till they get paid off, so. That's enough for last year. There's a lot more I could say, but we're, we're doing the best we can with what we've got. I wish we took in a lot more tax money, these, these big towns, but we're doing the best we can. We've got, oh, and last year, one good note last year. There were permits paid, now this isn't nowhere near what we'd expected, but there were permits paid on twenty million five hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars worth of buildings, homes, everything, just everything, fence permits, all together. So that's, that's one bright thing, so. This year, we've already, we've got five houses being built on Frank T. Button. We've got eleven duplexes fixing to be started here on thirty-one across from Marty Mark there. We're waiting on a master plan for all the land that was bought out where the golf course was. They're wanting to start houses, and, well, they're wanting to do everything, so. We're, we should have a master plan from them, hopefully, in the next month. We've got a lot of plans this year, stuff we're planning for the parks. Lot more building. We've got things wanting to come out on the thirty-one overpass now. We're just waiting to see if we've got room and if, you know, if we can make things work, you'll see some new businesses coming out there. And hopefully, some on eighty-nine soon, within the next year or so. I've seen a lot of good things, and there's some more houses being built on, I think, Chalkdale, and another one being built over in McGee Acres over here. So we've got, got a lot going on right now. But everything's looking better. We're working on, on the jail. We met with the state people the other day and trying to get things worked out there. But all in all, it's, we're getting things done. It's just taking time. We've had setbacks, but I promise you, we'll get there, so. Y'all just hang with us. We'll do the best we can. All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Terry Tokowski, want to speak?
Last month, you guys decided to take a vote and keep me from speaking. You know, you broke my constitutional rights, right? Let me read you something here. This is Article Two, Section Four, right of Assembly and added petition from the Arkansas State Constitution. The right of the people peaceably to assemble, to consult for the common good, and to petition by address or remonstrance, the government or any department thereof shall never be abridged. Shall. Okay, that's not a, that's not a choice. All right, I'll, I'll read you this other one, too. It's the First Amendment from the United States Constitution. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or pro biding the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. All right, I'm not sure what y'all voted on last month. Was it because I was rude? Because I didn't sign your damn form? I'm not sure. All right, if it's because I was rude, who's the judge and the jury in here? Decided you was gonna restrict my rights? All right, you all voted on that shit. All right, your, your little form here that you put in a little clause in here that you can't speak about personnel issues. That's on you guys, not me. I talk about any damn thing I wanna talk about. All right? You guys can't talk about it, unlike Mr. Ransome over here last month that wanted to tell me that the employee I wanted to talk about was a piece of shit, deserved to be fired anyway. I mean, that's talking to the public about employees, right? It's what you're not allowed to do. Not what I'm not allowed to do, what you're not allowed to do. All right, so don't put that shit on me. I got my rights. You cannot discriminate against my speech based on my content. If I wanna come up here and talk about whatever I wanna talk about, if I wanna cuss, you cannot restrict my speech for that. All right, there's, Ginger here can tell you, there's plenty of case law out there, constitutional law. No, it doesn't work that way. Now, understand that you put this little thing here talking about these personnel issues because Ms. Ford wanted to talk about a family member getting fired last year. So you blocked her from being able to address the council in the first place. And then you come around and you put this little note on the thing, which there is no contingency on there. All right, there is no contingency that says if I don't sign this, I don't get to speak to y'all. Okay, that's not a rule. You guys can vote and make your own rules, apparently, you already do. But that's not a rule, all right? If I don't sign this, doesn't mean that I don't get to speak with you. And by the way, I've never signed one of these before, and I never will. But you guys said the precedence, I just emailed it. I sent it over to her, she sent me back, yep, I got it, you're on the agenda. That's the precedence that I've been working on for two years now. Now you wanna say I gotta sign a form? No. That's pretty much all I got for you guys. But you're all acting like a bunch of tyrants up in here last month.
No worse than you do when you run through town calling everybody.
Calling you a tyrant?
Yeah.
You damn right. You sat here and voted to take my rights away from me, tyrant.
You're calling me one, but I haven't done anything.
You sat right there and voted to take my right away.
Because of the way you're acting now.
How did I act? Hey, well, you voted last month on how I'm acting now. What a jackass are you?
I'm a lot.
Exactly. You voted last month for the way I'm acting now.
Not just because of the way you treat the whole town and the way you run around and tell everybody when you should just talk to somebody, and a lot of people.
No, I talked for, I talked for months. I talked for months, and I got, I got ignored.
No, if you would just talk to somebody.
Where, where we at on those gas tanks down there at the, at the yard? Are we, are we in compliance with the law on that? Are we in compliance with any laws? You need to quit engaging with me. If you can't, if you can't bring up to my caliber, then you need to just shut up.
Okay, Long Lono County Library, if anybody. Our community center, Mr. Mike Brown.
You're up, Mike.
Okay. Yeah, something I wanna add there, I'll just sit around. That first, April the eighth, whether we wanted to come or not, first the solar eclipse passing through Long, through Arkansas. And I just wanna give y'all some, some, some just general information on, on what's gonna carry. The solar eclipse is, the shadow is a hundred and seventeen miles wide. And Long Loke, we, we will be at ninety-nine percent totality. Starts in De Queen at one forty-six and leaves the state in Pocahontas at two o'clock. Arduke predicts that one point five million people outside the state will, will come to Arkansas. So that's roughly seven hundred thousand extra vehicle trips during that time. And most people, we're just predicting, will leave immediately after the eclipse. So if you'll pass out a, like a traffic map, and if you look, purple is extremely, extremely heavy traffic. Red is very high traffic. Yellow or gold is high traffic, and blue is significant traffic. So a lot of people be coming inside the, inside the area of totality. And the hottest spot, which is probably around Russellville, somewhere, you know, close to the mountains. And I don't know if there's much planned. We were having meetings, but they kinda got scrapped, and everybody's doing the, doing their own things. I got a couple of things I'm doing, and anything else, I don't have privy to. So, and this will be our last meeting before the eclipse comes around. So I thought that was interesting that if it's sunny, it's gonna be a busy day in Arkansas for. if it's sunny, it's gonna be a busy day in Arkansas for a few hours. Okay. So the month of, uh, February, uh, and I, I wanna thank y'all again, we got, we got the final shipment of, uh, new equipment in, uh, today. And, uh, we got new TVs up on the wall and, uh, we, we look like, uh, better than the ten fitness. There's, uh, better than any, uh, fitness place in Lononoke. Uh, we've been getting really good compliments from the members. And, uh, I've seen people in there that I hadn't seen in years. So thank y'all again for allowing me to purpose that. And, uh, and that'll allow us to operate, uh, for another, in twelve years. I'll be gone on the, on the next one. Promise, I'll be gone.
Wendell tells me that new equipment produces electricity or.
Yeah, uh, we've got some that, when you get on it, it puts electricity back in the building.
Well, that's why I told him I knew when he was out there, because it was a glow. He was lighting that place up. He was, he was helping us out.
But, uh, thank y'all again. Okay, uh, events, Baptist Health will be there on the twenty-seventh and actually we, uh, Wednesday, uh, will be our second session of, uh, we have a dietitian come in and they give us free lunch. And, uh, this is the second of the four week, uh, that should be teaching, you know, how to eat healthy. Our February member of the month is Melody Hunter. Spring break is, uh, kinda snuck up on his next week, I think. And so we're just going with what we usually have going, chess ping pong, pickleball, basketball. Leaving inflatable up all, all week. And we do have, go ahead, solar eclipse glasses, two dollars and we probably got a hundred twenty pair left, so. Uh, if you need glasses, come, come get them. You know, I said, uh, our members liked the equipment. Uh, but they've been on me. And I, I said, well, I'm going to the council, uh, this month, we got a water fountain and I didn't know the water fountain downstairs was that important. And, uh, and, you know, I got folks that's literally getting mad, so. I need, uh, to get approval to get, to get it fixed. And my folks are kinda crazy. Uh, we've got a Halsey Taylor and that, that's what I wanted to, to go with, so. We order from Cully Supply, which, uh, we order, uh, shower parts and we keep on hand when the shower breaks down. And, uh, Cully's got a water fountain, uh, uh, for twenty-seven seventy fifty. And with the, we're so up to date that a fitness place with, you know, without a bottle filler, uh, you gotta have it, so we wanna add the bottle filler with it and that's twenty-seven seventy. Uh, and that doesn't include the ins- installation. So I got with, uh, Ben Franklin and their cost for installation, which I didn't make a copy, but their cost for installing it is eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, so you take that and add it to the twenty-seven seventy. Uh, it comes out to roughly thirty-six hundred dollars. Uh, and then a turnkey, uh, water fountain from Ben Franklin, which is a, it's a, it's an L-K brand, but it's, they're, they're pretty much the same. It's three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and that's, that's turnkey. I don't have to order it, just tell them, give them okay, they'll come install it. So that's kinda what I'm asking for.
You see a picture event, does it look the same?
It looks almost the same. It's got a bottle filler, uh, it's, it's been like pulling teeth to get pictures and get them to send what I need. Let's see if I got it.
Which one do you prefer?
The one that worked. The, uh, L-K is fine. It's, I mean, there's, if you. I'll pass it around, it looks just like what we have now. Y'all don't approve it, I guess I gotta stand downstairs with water for the picture.
They fill, they fill up their bowl.
They want that water.
How many pictures you leave?
Yep, I'm getting water over there. Like we do when we was little, yeah. You can come in the house.
Well, it looks exactly the same. As the, that Halsey Taylor.
What kind of warranty they have on those, you know?
Uh, from the company, he said if something goes wrong, they will give us a year, but they've got the parts so they can come right out and fix it. The other one was, it lasted twenty-two years.
Yeah. Oh, you, that's what you're wanting, the thirty-three hundred dollar one?
Yes, sir. From, from, Ben Franklin, from.
I make. He was charging eight hundred to install.
Install.
The other guy was?
Just install price, Mike.
Just install price.
The other one don't list installation, but with it and the tax.
Thirty-six. I make most go ahead with this thirty-three.
One second.
Motion from Wendell, go ahead with the Benjamin Franklin, the thirty-three seventy-six. Second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Oh, you got, uh, we got a, remove fixed assets. That list of what all the trade-ins, the stuff we're getting rid of, y'all've got a vote to remove that. I make a motion. Motion, Stephen, to remove the, uh, trade-ins, the assets, second by Wendell Moore. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care.
Y'all come out and see the, this is nice, I'm, I'm gonna start again.
Come out there and produce some electricity for it.
Any calls about.
Fire Department Chief Justin Whittenburn.
Good evening, y'all. Uh, we're having much relax, month, we have forty-five calls, uh, twenty-nine of us called sixteen fire calls. Six of them were overlapping, uh, averaged on same time with forty-one minutes and forty-five seconds. Anyway.
Radio's doing good?
Radio's doing good.
Did you get the Maxons installed yet?
They are installed and all working.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the, uh, Public Works, uh, Director Thomas Stivers.
There you are. How are you? I don't plan on being up here in a while. Alright, so, um, we, uh, we had a pretty good month in the water department, we, uh, we're about lower nineteen thousand to the good. The street and the community development department, we, uh, we're in the negative. Uh, street department, we, uh, dropped down about seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and community development was eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. But we bought our I-works program last month and that was eight thousand of that, so. Um, just where we are, water loss, we were seventeen and a half percent, we did a lot of flushing last month, got a lot more flushing to do this month. So I look for that number to stay pretty close to that, maybe more, maybe a little less, see you next month. Uh, James was able to get ten dogs rescued out of the shelter, uh, last month and he wanted me to tell y'all and put it on camera that they're having an event out there in the shelter. March twenty-third, Saturday, March twenty-third, so I think that, that's what I was told and, uh, he's killing it in code enforcement as well. Uh, we had twenty-six code enforcement door hangs, uh, so he's, he stayed on top of things. Uh, didn't issue any citations, but he's trying to get people to clean up best he can, so he's, he's doing a really good job of that. Rob's doing a really good job, calling, telling his mother water, his mother's street crew, seems to be working very hard right now. Um, so that's basically all I've got until we get to spending money, so y'all got anything for me? Okay, so, uh, first we're gonna do the, I'm gonna ask to purchase the budgeted RTV for the, for the water department, they're just getting around, looking for, uh, looking for leaks on cross-country lines that we have that aren't easily accessible and will use to do some spraying, uh, as well. So that is what I would like to ask for and for that amount, it's fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents.
It's the same, same one they've got at the park, so we know what we're getting, that's the exact same. Motion from Raymond, second by Sean, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care.
Alright, next on the list is, uh, I need to see if y'all would be willing to purchase a budgeted international truck. It's a MV six oh seven international chassis with, uh, we're gonna swap the flatbed off of our old international truck onto this new truck, should y'all decide to buy it for the amount of a hundred and two thousand, sixty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. That's gonna be one of our main dump trucks that we're gonna have, uh, you know, it's a flatbed dump truck, so it's easier to load mud and stuff onto than a big one for, uh, cleaning ditches and stuff like that.
Paying with the ARPA money?
Motion.
Motion, Raymond, to accept the one oh two sixty-five fifty-seven. Second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care.
So next is actually reworking the ARPA money, uh, mayor, so I think, turn it over to y'all for that, correct? You don't have to turn it over to y'all for the resolution, changing the ARPA money, so I'll let y'all do your thing on that one and I'll keep going.
I make a motion to put resolution number three dash one dash twenty twenty-four on the floor.
Second.
Motion. Wendell, second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care.
Resolution number three dash one dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city council to obligate American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purchase of equipment for the Lononoke Public Works Department and to amend the twenty twenty-four American Rescue Plan Act grant fund budget. Whereas the city of Lononoke recognizes the need to provide services for its local citizens and the mayor and the city council understand the responsibility of the Lononoke Public Works Department to deliver services that promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Lononoke. And whereas the city of Lononoke has received funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which was signed into law on March first, twenty twenty-one, to provide fiscal relief funds to the state and local governments and other program areas aimed at mitigating the continuing effort, effects of the pandemic. And whereas this resolution is intended as a statement of intent of the city council to spend a portion of the city's ARPA funds in accordance with federal law and guidance for the current needs and priorities as set forth below. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Lononoke, Arkansas, that section one. The city council hereby obligates one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents from the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Lo- State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the purchase of a twenty twenty-five international truck and a Kubota RTV XG eight five zero for the Lononoke Public Works Department as shown on exhibits A and B. Section two, the American Rescue Plan Act budget previously proved is now amended to reflect the following as shown. Increased street department project expense, two thousand and sixty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Decreased fire department expense, thirteen thousand and nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Increased water department project expense, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Decreased parks department project expense, three thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Section three, it is necessary for the continued operation of municipal government that the American Rescue Plan Act grant fund be, budget be approved by resolution one dash two dash twenty twenty-four. Be amended to reflect the changes presented in exhibit C as attached.
Motion from Raymond, to accept. Second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care.
How we doing this? Alright, so next, we've got two wells, just to give y'all a little bit of background information that we pump off our water front. October of twenty-two, we got the front well reworked, we had to install new casing, what, what was happening and it's happening in the back well, that's why I'm here asking, like, it's pumping the water up, it's four hundred and thirty feet down to the water, that's how deep the wells are, both of them. So what it's doing, it's pumping the water up and the, the casing comes in ten-foot sections, so you basically have forty sections of pipe with threads in them. The water's being pumped out and the threads are corroding, the water's falling back into the ground, so it's having to work a lot harder to pump the same amount of water. So I would like to, on an emergency basis, this is the way we did the first one, and I would like to do that on the second, this will as well, get it fixed from, uh, Frank Elder Will Supply for the amount of rough sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Be using depreciation funds for fixing that, correct Regina?
What the mayor and I had talked about while you were out sick was getting you to tear it down so we can have.
No, an exact amount.
Exact price.
Okay, yeah.
There's no way till I get into it. We just need y'all's permission for.
Cause I think that is what he did the first time.
Well, he put that in the recommendation letters as well, that's right.
Right. He, he, he can't give us an exact price without taking it apart.
That's right.
So it could be less, could, uh, you know, we don't know.
Yeah, I talked to Frankie about it and he said, he said that, you know, if you don't do something with it, it could collapse that hole and then you gotta build a new well, that's about a half minute, little over half minute now. So. I think we need to get it fixed because it could be pumping some dirty water.
We just, uh, we just need y'all's permission to get started.
I make the motion.
Motion, Raymond, to get started on the well. Second by Wendell, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care.
Alright, I swear, two more things, I'll leave you all alone.
You're not leaving.
Yeah, you're right. Alright, so the next one, our back pond, the oxidation pond back there, we have a flotation type device that looked like it got installed in nineteen thirty-two, if I was willing to bet. That, uh, it kinda lets us know what the bio level is so that we know how much treated sewer water we can turn into the bio. Well, we've been infilling that thing, working on it, and I think it's time for something else. We can, uh, install another skater unit, just like we have the water plant, our wells, our tanks, that we can look on our phones, computers, we can see how everything's running twenty-four seven. I would like to put a new skating unit back there, we can get flow time reports from the water coming out of the pond, flow time reports on our phone for the water going through the bio. Um, it just, it'd be a really efficient way to show the bio depth, so this is why I'd like to use, you know, this avenue to be able to look at that. And it's for, uh, seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and two pennies.
I make that motion.
Motion, Raymond, to accept the seventy-three twenty-three oh two, second by Wendell Moore. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Alright, and lastly, our, uh, our leak machine, uh, that's been running like a top for close to a year now. Um, that's one way to put it, I guess. So it actually hasn't been that bad, beer loss, we, since probably the summer of last year, we've had a few minor inconveniences with it, but nothing big like we had been having for a while. So we, uh, the fan broke on, this is the fan that's original to the unit, this ain't something that's been changed out before the fan went out on it. Um, blades broke off, so I really didn't know what it was gonna cost, so we took it to, uh, our repair shop and this is the amount that it's gonna cost to basically replace that fan, it's six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents on the leak machine and I would like to get that fixed as well.
So move.
Raymond made a motion to accept the six thousand, ninety-eight fifty-nine. Second by Sean, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion care.
I am D U N done.
Now, Police Department Chief Matt Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you're enjoying the spring weather, hopefully it stays around. Um, you got the report from you. Um, February, we had two hundred and twenty, uh, reported, uh, complaints or dispatch calls. No federal warrants served, we had twenty-three misdemeanor warrants served, five new misdemeanor arrests, three new felony arrests, twenty-two citations and fifty-five reports. And in the, uh, second page of the report shows you the citations by district. Any questions in the regard of that? Alright. Um, coming for you tonight, uh, wanna request to purchase a budgeted item of. budgeted item of ten ballistic vests with ten outer carriers to go with that. Uh, in the past, we have been, um, allowing or making the, uh, officers purchase their own outer carrier. Um, my deal is if it's going to go for purchasing the vest, I want to pick up the, uh, outer carriers that were all consistent and all looked the same. Uh, Tico is a newer company coming out of, uh, it's there in Benton, but they have ties with Louisiana. Uh, and they're doing a lot of stuff and they actually won, uh, the, the quote for, uh, Tico due to they are, uh, through a state contract on these particular, uh, vests. Um, majority of these vests are going to be replacing ones that are going to be expiring in April. So we'll be able to get them in April, by April, but we'll be able to carry on and, uh, make do for those. So I'm requesting a purchase of ten vests with ten outer carriers for the total of thirteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and ten cents.
Motion from Stephen to accept the, uh, thirteen eight eighty-eight ten. Who second?
Second.
Raymond, second, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye? All opposed?
Thank you, y'all be able to get in touch with them so they can come to the police department and start sizing us. Any other questions?
Yes, what's the update on the jail?
Date on the jail?
We're waiting.
Oh, okay.
They, they're, they're supposed to send us some ideas they've got, so hopefully this week or next, did she say?
She didn't.
Yeah, so, which they've, it's kind of tied up in the problems they've been having with the.
I can't say that, that we did meet with, uh, probation parole and, uh, ACC this week to discuss some things. They got ideas, don't know if it's going to be done.
She's supposed to send us some, I told her two or three different ways we could go, that they would work with us, so we'll see. We're kind of.
In limbo.
At the mercy of everybody else, just waiting to hear, so.
Any other, any questions? Alright, y'all have a great evening.
Parks and Mosquito, Director Evan Jacobs.
You don't want any money, do you?
I mean, you got something laying around. Look, you know I can spend the money, Wayne.
I know.
For my other four guys, uh, we finished up baseball and softball sign-ups, three hundred and thirteen children signed up for the program this year. Um, we are gonna have our opening day on April the thirteenth, uh, we're not gonna have it on our usual first weekend in April, obviously to avoid conflict with the, uh, with the eclipse coming through town. Thanks for working on, uh, we're working on getting quotes for the pavilions. Our, uh, sales rep is supposed to be getting those to us, we're waiting back to get the, to hear back from the engineers to design the footers for the, uh, new pavilions for the city park. And we are also, you know, anybody, any of the kids looking for a summer job, we are hiring right now in the concession stand at the ballpark for gate workers. Do y'all have any questions for me?
But, uh, Phil said, uh.
Things, okay. Engel Fins Company has come out and they put up the new post, uh, I talked to them this morning, they're gonna be about two to three weeks, cause they're waiting on the, uh, chain link to get in. So that's well underway. Anything else?
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Old business, uh, solar array. Any questions on that?
Yes, sir.
New, uh, new business. Okay, we need to set a date for a city cleanup. I was thinking about starting at like the thirteenth of April, but then if that eclipse goes through, people always start setting stuff out two weeks early. I don't want trash all over town before. So I was thinking the first, the last full week in April or the first full week in May. So whatever y'all. The last, last full week in April, which would be.
Starting on twenty-sixth.
It's Monday. Yeah. So it starts on the twenty-third, well, it starts on that Saturday, the twenty-third to the thirtieth, through the thirtieth. That'd give us two Saturdays. That sound okay? That'd give them two Saturdays, cause more people's gonna do it Saturday than any other. And it always strings out, it'll end up being. Oh, I'm looking at March, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Cause April twenty-sixth.
Either twentieth through the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Sorry. Hey, I'm old. God excuses, don't he, Ryan? Twentieth through the twenty-seventh.
I make the motion to twentieth through the twenty-seventh?
Motion from Stephen to twentieth through the twenty-seventh. Second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion, Karen.
I got a question coming up, Trey. Uh, I've had some people ask me and we've had some buses, they hit them, the trash cans sitting out on the side of the road all week long. Is there anything we can put in the water bill, tell them? I mean, if you, if you go down the street and you meet somebody, if you run by a trash can, you got to stop or you're gonna run over it.
Well, and I've had, well, matter of fact, I need to put something in there anyway, because the girl from the post office came and people are putting their trash cans out right in front of their post office and they're not gonna get out and move your trash can out to move to deliver your mail, so. If you want to get your mail, you need to keep your trash can out from in front of the, the mailbox. So.
I didn't know we could put something in there.
There'd be something and dress both of them at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll print up something and put in there.
A lot of them just leave them all week long sitting on the side of the road and you got to dog them for somebody coming.
Anything else? Anything new anybody want to bring up? I know, you may mention something about the public comment. About what? About what, man? About what, mayor?
The public comment.
Was it loud or, I mean, is it, do we have to have it? I mean.
No.
Ginger, what?
You don't have to have a public comment period, but politically, it's probably a good idea to let your citizens come in and say, say their piece if they have some things to share. Mr. Takowski, as usual, is incorrect about what he said about his constitutional rights. Uh, we do have a first amendment right to free speech, however, the city also has, uh, the right to issue time, place and manner restrictions on people's speech. So for instance, we can say that you can only speak for three minutes. We can say you have to stand at the podium. We can say that you need to fill out this form so that we'll know what you're gonna say. And, and, but we can't restrict his particular content of his speech. And obviously today, as Mr. Takowski usually does, he was just trying to bait everybody in and I appreciate everybody's wisdom and just letting him cuss and holler and look like the fool that he is, but other than that, um, I don't know that there's a whole lot we should do, uh, to, to stop that, um, other than just letting him rant and rave and say the wrong thing and then move forward.
You know, I hate that you have to do it, but you know, he's got to affect other citizens that really got a complaint to come up here and say something to me.
Right.
But, you know, it get, get pretty tough to sit and hear somebody rant and cane.
We know his character. We know his character and we don't have to take it to heart what he says because we know his character.
We wait a bit, see what happens. Is there anything else? Yeah, I need approval to pay bills. Motion. Motion, Wendell Moore, to pay bills, second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Planning Commission will make, uh, Monday, March eighteenth, six p.m. Motion, Karen. Motion, Karen, by Sean, second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion, Karen. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.